Franklin County Boulder County Commissioner Nye Sessions. Commissioner Jones, would you lead us in the prayer and the pledge, please, sir?
Yes, sir. Heavenly Father, we thank you today for this day you've given to us. We thank you for the opportunity for all of us to be here. We thank you, Lord, for the ability to make good and prudent decisions today. God, if we lack wisdom, we ask of you now that you would give it to us because you promised not to withhold it from us. Father, help us to use discretion today in every decision we make, not for just this day, but for the future of Franklin County and the state of Florida, in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Amen.
Good morning.
Next on the agenda will be approval of the minutes.
So moved, sir.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Mast, second by Commissioner Jones. Any discussion on it? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes unanimously. Next on the agenda will be payments of the county bills.
So moved, sir.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Mast, second by Commissioner Jones. Any discussion on it? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes unanimously. Next on the agenda will be payments of the county bills.
So moved, sir.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Mast, second by Commissioner Jones. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes unanimously. Public comment.
Good morning, gentlemen. My name's Chris Langston with Coastline Environmental Materials. I'm here this morning, I want to talk to you all about a proposal that I've got right now, that's a 30,000-ton deployment for the creation of an artificial reef just outside of Bob's Sites Cut at the Buddy Warren Memorial Reef Site. This material's going to be anywhere from 500 pounds to about three or four tons. It's coming from Taylor County, and the pit's under Jefferson County ownership. The reason I'm here this morning is just to kind of make you aware. I've been in touch with Michael Morone, and some of you, I've emailed some of the literature that we've already submitted to Gulf Triumph for funding. And what I'd like to do is just take a short period of time this morning to kind of let you know and make you aware that I'm available for any questions or anything like that prior to the next meeting. And, you know, like I said, I've got some more information, location maps, pictures of the type of material that'll be used. And one thing that the county needs to understand, I'm asking simply for a little letter of support, and that's it. I'm not asking for the county to buy anything, pay for anything, you know, just a letter of support is all I'm asking for. And that's going into a Gulf Triumph, and one thing that I have been told is, what we're looking at is building five to six different sites in this one square mile. And each site, every time that we get ready for deployment, we have to fill out, of course, the data sheets and deployment sheets for FWC, but at the same time, we're going to be here before the commission to make the commission aware of every site right before deployment, to get y'all to sign off on it. My name's, like I said, my name's Chris Langston. I believe everybody here's got my contact information. If you don't, if you would, get in touch with Mr. Morone. He will share with y'all the applicable information, and I'll be in touch with you for the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, any more public comment?
Just want to say, Mr. Chairman, we welcome public comment, and it's something very special to us. And I don't want anybody to feel shy and have stage fright like I used to have. And just know that it's a special time here for you to open up and tell us what you know and what your thoughts are, because we enjoy that and certainly treasure that education from you. Thank you.
I'd like to give you some assurance that most of the audience here are for specific items, so there, I don't think you have too many people who are shy in the audience, Commissioner.
Okay, good.
But they are here for specific items on the agenda.
Good.
Any more public comment? Okay, next on the agenda will be Mr. Howard Neighbors, Superintendent of Public Work.
Good morning, Commissioners, how y'all doing? Excuse me. I just got a couple items, y'all asked about last time about the work on the Franklin County signs. We've got all of them back up, but one which had damage, we're getting it fixed, which is on the west end of the county, 98 west end of the county. And so if we get that back up, we have all of them fixed, and everything, roadwork and everything up to the county is doing good, doing good.
You pass that over to Howard for me. Howard, there's an email I got from a constituent just concerned about the inappropriate posting of business-type signs allegedly on right-of-ways, not sure if it's county or state, but that particular individual has brought that issue up, and I affirmed the issue that he's talking about. It's a, I've been taught by county staff that the appropriate way to manage that is just internally, and remove them if it's appropriate. Alan?
Yeah, yeah, basically, this happens periodically, and we always want to see, you know, the democratic process work to its completion, but when it's a complete, i.e. election, we want people to pick up their signs. And sometimes the winners are much more apt to pick up their signs than the non-winners. So we have that issue sometimes out there, and then this year with Hurricane Michael coming through, we had a lot of mobile contractors, and I'll use that word contractor lightly, loosely, coming through and putting up signs, and so they may or were run through and not picked up their signs. So, yeah, I can confirm that it's just a matter of, Howard, you know, if there's a question, I'd go ahead and get it.
Some, you got old telephone poles and stuff like that.
Yes, sir, and there is. And can you touch telephone poles? Are you?
We don't want to do that.
You don't want to do that. Do we, do we get ahold of the power company and ask them for that consideration?
They don't allow it on their own, that's an issue for them, because they own those poles, and so I just do not get involved.
Not even talk to them?
Well, no, no, we can talk to them, I don't have a problem with that. I didn't know I was going to get on poles.
I know.
Yeah, on telephone poles.
If you arrive at Alligator Drive in 98, there are two power poles on each side of that road there that are loaded, decorated with all kinds of commercial signs. And would it be appropriate to write the power company and ask them to do?
Yeah, just have them listen to our own, and contact them.
Okay, that'd be good.
And probably, and probably for that, most of the signs we do pick up, you know, it's on shoulder of the road.
Yes, that's indeed.
Stuck in the ground, we pick all out of, and that's probably why they put them on the poles.
This one's got to climb up, yeah.
Okay.
Anybody got anything else for Mr. Neighbors?
I do have one item on my report, number eight on my report. At the Christian Bolt, I called Mr. John Murphy, I'll appoint a volunteer fire department, and asked him if the county could stockpile the lime rock and other road material that is currently on County Road 370, on the cleared land that the volunteer fire department owns on 370. It's about a two-acre parcel there that's been cleared off and leveled. Mr. Neighbors has informed Christian Bolt that there is somewhat of a safety issue with the county trucks turning and loading material on the road, that road being 370, with vehicles driving down it. Mr. Murphy has talked to the volunteer board, and they have agreed to let the county store the material. I told Mr. Murphy that this would not be a permanent request, because once Alligator Drive is relocated and rebuilt, then the county would not need to continue to stockpile material. I have given Mr. Neighbors' cellphone to Mr. Murphy, so the two of them can talk directly, and I've showed the site to Clay Kennedy when we were on the point, and he thought the site would also work. So I just want to say that's in the progress, unless you all have some objection, I will let Mr. Neighbors work with it.
Please press on. That'll add potential beautification to the side of Alligator Drive.
Get us off the main road.
Yes, sir.
And then, and I guess you'll make a site visit to see if you can maneuver your equipment in that space and still have your stockpiles and all that.
Yes.
That'd be good to hear from you.
And get off that main road, and they can tear the shoulder of the road up too, also.
Yep.
In the end, have a big heavy truck, so.
The only issue the fire department had was that, and I told them it would be a concern for us, so they don't want us to dig up, you know, rut the site up, and I said, well, first of all, we wouldn't do that, we don't want to operate that way, but after it's over, there may be, you know, we would probably level it out.
We'll clean it up, yeah, we definitely, we'll level it all, clean it up.
Good, that'd be a good thing.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to mention something. Mr. Howard, sometime this week or the next week, I'm going to get up with you and want to ride around and show you some issues I have with signage in my district.
Okay.
Not what we're talking about here, but actual street signs, road signs, stop signs, some stuff I think needs to be addressed. We'll look at it together if that's okay.
And we also got a lot of signs and posts that's twisted, the sign from the storm, which we got pictures of all that, hoping to get reimbursed for. And we got a bunch of post and signs and stuff ordered, we can't come in yet to start trying to redo some of that stuff.
Do you know a timeframe of when that order's supposed to be here, a month?
Probably, probably a while, but we got a lot of, a lot of twisted posts. Anytime a post twists, you have to replace the old post.
Well, between now and whenever we do that, if you could, just call and ask if they can give you any kind of better ETA. That'd be great.
And we also got a bunch of signs for the city, which we got them ready.
Oh, it's all over the county?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Chairman, you get them, I'll put them up.
Yeah, we got them, he got them fixed, they're ready to go, so.
I'll put them up.
Okay.
All right, anybody else got a name for Mr. Neighbors? Keep up the good work.
Yes, sir.
Next on the agenda will be Mr. Fonda Davis, Solid Waste Director.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning. I have a couple items that did not get to make my report for this morning. Last board meeting, I asked you all to go out on bids for the grinding of the hurricane vegetation. Since then, we had debris, disaster debris management site inspection, which means there is areas that we are allowed to stage the debris throughout the county, and then the landfill was one of the sites. They come around and did a brief inspection, and we are either in or near the wetlands, which is a violation. So in order to correct that, I need to try to get that, go ahead, the chipping done immediately.
What you need to do?
Find some kind of way to go around and bid and process.
Well, you got the emergency. So are you suggesting there's an emergency situation?
Yes, that's correct.
And what the DEP tells us that we're in violation of the wetland setback?
That's correct. Yes.
Commissioners, you do have within your local bid policy a provision which allows you to waive the bid policy in the event of an emergency. Sounds like this probably qualifies for that. One other question, though, Mr. Davis, are you expecting the grinding to cost more or less than $10,000?
More.
Any idea how much more? I mean, what is the board looking at in terms of cost of grinding?
Initially, when the contract, a contract that come out and just was looking at it, it was about 25,000 cubic yards, about $40,000, but since then, we have gained more storm debris.
Okay. Alan, is this something that's reimbursable to the county, or do we?
Well, we've already been reimbursed essentially, because we received the debris, so we've been paid for the debris that's hauled in, so we would use some of the revenue that's already received. You can't get, you can't, and we'd like to double bill it.
Yes.
So we weren't paid for this.
You got the money in your budget?
Some things we think should not be.
Well, I said we wouldn't.
Really?
Well, we have been paid some reimbursement from.
Yeah, there's, I know, we have over $150,000.
Actually, we got quite a bit from Ferrovia.
That's correct.
Yeah, which was the state debris contractor. That was about a $400,000 payment, so there is funds available in the tipping fee fund to pay for the grinding.
Okay. Let me ask you a question, one more question, Fonda.
Yes, sir.
Now, you said that's the landfill, is we in violation anywhere else?
No, sir. I'm aware, they, it was just the landfill.
So that's, if we do this, this should get us on a hard way?
That's correct.
And there's no way we can get a waiver under the emergency disaster situation that we have? They're still very strict on that.
That's correct.
In spite of, okay.
With wetlands? Yes, sir.
I just wondered about that.
Well, I think Fonda's going to do the best she can in the circumstances to get, to get fair and competitive quotes for this, but it's something that has to be dealt with anyway. Yeah, if we got a waiver, it would be a temporary waiver, eventually got to move the debris.
Yeah, got to do it, okay. So we're saying Fonda's got some tipping fee monies that will help in this extra expense?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're okay to press on in that area for you? Okay, good.
Pleasure to vote.
I make a motion, Fonda, find somebody to chip it up.
Yep.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Mast.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jones.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, upon order, the motion would need to include a finding by the board that this is an emergency situation, so would you so amend your motion, Commissioner Mast, in your second, Commissioner Jones?
I would amend my second to also include to keep us from incurring any DEP fines for the county. Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. All right, the motion and the second been amended, let them state that this is an emergency, but that any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes unanimously.
The next item is that the billing for the reimbursement or the tipping fees, the tipping fees for the storm debris, we was on the impression that we was going to bill each city's for their tipping fees, but since then, we was told we're to bill Crowder Gulf who did the hauling for the cities. And we're not clear, I spoke to Mr. Shula a little bit about it, but I just didn't know what the board, what FDOT is telling us, that we need to build Crowder Gulf, and they were in turn getting their money from the state, but we was thinking that we need to build each city individually. So I guess the board, I just need to know what the board wants us to do is.
Okay, what?
Mr. Chairman, what I suggested to Mr. Davis was that he get the board to authorize the direct billing of, to FDOT for the debris removal, subject to us receiving written instructions from FDOT in this matter, because the way I understand the billing structure that they're now suggesting is inconsistent with the structure that was agreed to upfront. We just need something in writing from FDOT telling us what they want us to do, and so that we don't end up being responsible for the cost of the tipping fees for the two cities. So I think he's asking for conditional authority to submit a bill.
Yes.
Want to receive clarification and written instructions from FDOT on this billing matter, the removal of the tipping fees for the two cities.
Okay. Pleasure to vote on it.
So moved.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner.
Second.
And second by Commissioner Jones.
Just a discussion for a minute?
Yeah, go ahead.
So we're saying that each city will be able to funnel their bills to Crowder Gulf, and ultimately, we focus on Crowder Gulf, if this is what we're planning?
Well, Commissioner Bolt, that's what we're trying to get, clarification from FDOT, because the contract was directly between FDOT and the cities and Crowder Gulf, they piggybacked on our local contract, but they were all direct contracts with us, and as you recall, the interlocal agreement said that the counties would have zero responsibility for the financial cost of removing debris from the two cities. So what we're needing from FDOT is a written directive that we can rely on that says, this is the structure for submitting bills for the city's tipping fees, but we are not accepting any financial responsibility. I mean, either the cities pay it, or the state pays it.
Okay.
I frankly prefer a structure in which we directly submit bills and receive direct payment. I think that's a positive thing. It's just inconsistent with how the billing structure and financial responsibility has been structured since the middle of October. So we need those written instructions from FDOT before we move forward and submit the bills. I've been in touch with the General Counsel's Office, and I've been exchanging phone calls with him and one of his assistants to get clarification. It's just taking some time. I mean, FDOT is a big, massive state agency, and they don't exactly respond super quickly, because they've got a lot on their plate, for one thing. I mean, you've got, you know, eight different small counties, and the entire northwest Florida panhandle has been devastated, so it's certainly understandable why they can't respond in the 10 days or so that we've been dealing with this.
But see, nobody here for emergency management today, and the consultant, shouldn't all that be took up with them too?
Well, actually, your consultant sent a termination notice on Saturday, so they're no longer on board. Pam is working with FD, or I guess FDEM and FDOT, trying to get some written instructions on this new billing structure. I don't know that she's got a response yet, but I haven't seen it yet, but I have got Pam working on, trying to get an answer to that question, and I'm working on it directly as well.
Mr. Chairman, one discussion. Going back when this first started, I remember all the other commissioners, because I'm still new enough at this, that didn't include me, they said, well, you know, the state's never done this before.
Correct.
They've never, so we've never, so that's, in my estimation, that's some of what's going on, that's never been done before, so of course, it's not all ironed out and perfect and, you know.
Sure.
But it's, it's working through, so that's, that's why I made a second to Commissioner's motion.
Okay, any more discussion?
All right, so the city of Applelet's Gulf has paid us some money for a tipping fee, not the complete amount. I think we need to sort of resolve internally what the best way to proceed with it. They've asked for the money back, but if we give it back, we haven't received anything from their contractor, so right now, we have some money to help offset the cost of what we, what they've incurred. So, you know, I just want to tell you, they have paid us some money, and have asked for it back, assuming that their contractor is going to pay us the full amount, but we haven't had anything from their contractor yet, so I'm a little, that's, we're in a sort of quandary about what we should recommend to you all, to be honest with you.
Which is why we need the written clarification from FDOT. This is all sourcing from an FDOT directive, so we need written instructions from them clarifying the billing structure and the fact that this is, bill will be submitted as a convenience, I guess, I suppose, FDOT and the contractor, as opposed to the county, accepting financial responsibility for the debris removed from the two cities. And that's been my concern all along, if we start submitting bills for their debris, then an argument can be made that somehow we have accepted financial responsibility for not be collecting our tipping fees from them, so. I would expect it to be resolved in the next week or two, is what I'm expecting.
Okay. So my understanding from, are we understanding from this, that we're really not going to do anything to receive a directive from DOT?
Yes, that is correct. And I know Pam is working with, I believe her name is Ms. Renee Sanders at FDOT, who sent out at least the initial communication on the billing structure. We just need clarification, I think officially, from someone higher up in DOT, that this is exactly how they want the county to submit bills on behalf of the city's tipping fees.
Okay. Mr. Shula, how about you keep a close eye on that and make sure we get through?
Yes, sir.
Looked like this is going to be your fight.
I'm sorry?
I said, looked like this is going to be your, your big fight in this.
It's not a fight, it's just a communication. Okay, it's just communication, there you go.
Anything else? No more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes unanimously.
Just to let you all know that the outstanding tipping fees, Crowder Gulf is 322,000, Ferrovia is 67,000, City of Carebells is 58,000, City of Applelet's is 165,000.
I'm the number they owe.
Right now, yes, sir. So if Crowder Gulf, if we have to, if we have to bill Crowder Gulf, it ought to be 613,000.
Okay. 613,000.
That's what's left over.
All right.
That's all I have this morning.
Anybody got anything else for Mr. Davis?
Finally, these are people on these baseball fields will start working out next month, and we still haven't done anything with the telephone poles and securing the different parks around the county, as far as those leaning telephone poles and where we at with that.
Yes, sir. Hopefully, with Mr. Cakes will be fixing the lights and the poles this week.
Okay.
We was waiting on all the parts to come in, where we can get a crane, going to take a crane to straighten the poles out.
So, Mr. Chairman?
Anybody else got?
Mr. Chairman, I have two items on our board that'll deal with parks erect, so I might as well do it, if you're okay with my ponder. Item number three, first of all, item number three on my report, informing the board that I've asked Dewberry Engineers to create two task orders for engineering work associated with two county parks that were heavily damaged by Hurricane Michael. The two parks are Island View and East Point Fishing Pier. Because these parks are structurally damaged by an engineer, I'm sorry, because these parks are structurally damaged, an engineer needs to quantify the repairs to be done, and then a PW can be written for FEMA to reimburse the county for the repairs. In the case of East Point Fishing Pier, we will use the fishing pier fund that was created by the funds DOT gave the county and not the county's reserve fund. The task order for the fishing pier is $6,500, and that will involve quantifying the damage, writing up the bid documents, and then overseeing the construction of the contractor hired to make the repairs. Now, I will tell you, we will, we are not going to hire a contractor, we can go out to bid until I get the PW for that approved from FEMA, but I want to, I can't get the PW written until I know what the volumes and all that kind of stuff. So we'll get that started, and then hand that over to Pam and her, and her situation to get, get the PW written. So that's Island View, and I think we'll probably need a motion when I'm done to spend $6,500 out of your fishing pier fund. In the case of, yeah, that was fishing pier, or in the case of Island View, it is a lot more complicated. FD, FDEP has agreed in concept that the funds set aside for the maintenance of the park that is available to us, and that's a total of $170,000, to give you an idea of the amount, can be used to develop reconstruction plans, but I'm awaiting confirmation of that amount. Well, I actually have that confirmation in an email from DEP, so they have confirmed we can use the maintenance money to help rebuild the park. At this time, Dewberry estimates the cost of quantifying the damage and creating bid documents will be about $20,000. The reason the cost is a lot higher than in East Point is that Island View suffered damage in ways that is hard to quantify. It's going to take a lot more work to rebuild the park where a substantial amount of land was shifted around. As an example, the parking lot has a central drain system with a collection pipe under the asphalt. The asphalt is in place, but the drain system is completely clogged with sand, so it is impossible to tell right now whether the pipe still works. I will be asking Howard Neighbors, your road superintendent, to get out there with a loader and some inmates and do some preliminary excavation to see how much of the parking lot and the brick pavers can be saved. The board can either wait for confirmation from DEP on the amount, and I will tell you now, they have confirmed up to $20,000 they spent on this effort, or it can approve the amount now, but I will not have the chairman sign the task order. So it's up to you all. We, what I'm going to do, and I'll finish reading this, and I'm sorry. In both cases, we'll ask, we'll seek FEMA funds to reimburse the county for the task orders, but we need the assessments in order to proceed with repairs, so I need to move forward the task orders, whether or not we can get FEMA to reimburse us. The risk with FEMA reimbursement is I'm not hiring Dewberry through their protocol, I've already got them online, and I may get into argument with FEMA later on that you didn't hire them properly. Well, that's, that's a fight I'll take later, but right now, I need to get these assessments done. So we have $6,500 from the, from the fishing pier fund, and then up to $20,000 out of your bridge, out of your Island View maintenance fund. And what I'm going to do, Commissioners, because the $20,000 is so much higher, I have been in contact with Doug Hattaway, who has given us some documents now that previously we weren't able to get, and I'm going to talk to their, and I've already, I've talked to Dewberry, so it's not a secret. Dewberry's willing to do the work, but it's a, it's a, it's a precarious situation, because we're not really sure what's involved, and so Dewberry understands that I'm going to go out and ask the contractor who built the park to see if they want to try and give us the construction plans and rebuild it for a less amount of money. So I'm going to try and get you all the cheapest amount of money, you know, do this job for the less amount of money, because that maintenance fund is, for us to use over the next 10 years, I don't want to burn it up now. So I just say that to you all, and I'm sort of, I haven't talked to Mr. Shula about this. I guess, Mr. Shula, I should proceed with get two closed and come back to the board, probably the simplest thing to do, and then we'll decide how we want to proceed.
Can we chat after the meeting?
We can chat after the meeting, okay. Or let's, if you don't mind, Commissioners, let's take action on the, on the fishing pier, on East Point, at $6,500. If you all want to spend $6,500 of your bridge maintenance money for that assessment, then I would need a motion of that effect.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Mast.
Just want to ask that you, excuse me, I want to just be sure if it's appropriate
Just want to ask that you, excuse me, I want to just be sure if it's appropriate that you, um, gather up all the site survey drawings and field work and construction drawings historically to that park so that we're not spending extra money to do it over again.
Right, right. Now, we have those, Jim Oskos with DEP has been very good about giving us construction drawings, so we have a much more, first of all, the damage is much more easy to quantify, but we have all the documents from the state on that one. So, thank you.
Any more discussion? All in favor? All opposed? That passes, unanimous.
The next item is item number four on my report. The East Point Pavilion has been declared a total loss by the county's insurance carrier. Commissioner Jones was mulling over the future of that space. Has one suggestion from staff, and that was me, is to keep the insurance money, demolish the remaining structure, and use the site for parking for the boat ramp. As the board is aware, the East Point channel should be dredged by 2020, so I recommend the site remain open until after the dredging, in the event the U.S. Corps of Engineers needs access point from the land for the dredging operation. And it's certainly possible the property might have a better use or a better design for a structure once the dredging is complete. So, my recommendation is to direct Parks and Rec to knock down the, we, we already got the insurance payoff. Let's knock down the rest of the building. Let's leave it vacant for the time being until we get the channel dredged and see how you want to proceed from there.
Page to the board.
Uh, I would say we need a motion to go ahead and demolish the building.
So, I want to make a motion to do away with the pavilion, but in the motion also, I want to make sure we do not dig up the rest of that pier. I'd like to attach it back to the land.
Okay, that's.
It's already in the water, so we own the pier there too. So, do away with the pavilion, keep the pier.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Parrish. Any more discussion? Any more discussion? All in favor? All opposed?
All right, so Mr. Dave, I'll, I'll let, let you, Mr. Dave, I'll let you then take the rest of the project down or whatever you need to do on the site.
Mr. Chairman, I have something for Mr. Fonda Wayes here that I, I keep forgetting about, and it's my fault. Uh, I have already talked to Fonda, already talked to finance. This has gone back some months, it's actually before the storm. We were waiting, the state started doing the project at Island View, no, Island View, Indian, Indian Creek, where they were fixing that new boat ramp and that gang plank and all that stuff. We were in between fixing the docks there that the crabbers pay rent for, so, uh, I need, I need to, I want to direct, uh, Mr. Davis, by way of making a motion to do so, to go out and get the quotes necessary to replace those finger piers on the east side, closest to the road of Indian Creek, because the money's in the fund, the people are paying rent to be there, and they have insufficient docking to do so, so.
Page to the board. I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Parrish. Any more discussion on that? That's all the damage we had at the owner, Commissioner?
No, that, that was something we were already in the process of going to do, it's just been forgotten since the storm. No, that was just a matter of time. It wasn't a storm thing, though.
But during the storm, did we have any more damage?
No, not that I'm aware of, not yet. No, not there.
Okay. All right. All in favor? All opposed? That passes, unanimous.
Finished.
That's it. Anybody else got anything from Mr. Davis? Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Ms. Banea not here. Anybody got?
Pam sent in a report, but there are no action items associated with the report. It's something we will talk about, uh, when she's here. She do, she did an after-action report that's some twenty-eight pages long with some attachments, and that's an internal, uh, it was a report that they, that her staff created based upon, you know, their, their review and whoever they consulted with, I don't, I'm not sure, of how they performed during the storm. Then they also responded to the community. There was a, a scope of work I provided to you all. They also responded to that, uh, in a format. I haven't read all through all that, but Pam is on here for us to talk, to talk about it, but it's in your record. You got it yesterday. And I have distributed that to the community who's interested in it also, so I'm sort of waiting for some feedback. I will tell you, in regard to the community response, I have sought out two quotes to see if there's additional work that needs to be done on this, and I'm waiting back. I've heard from two vendors, and I'm waiting back for some quotes, and I'll bring that to you all. But that's a document she's created for you all to review.
Just some general comments, Mr. Chairman?
There we go.
I was, um, very impressed and pleased to take a field trip last Tuesday out to the Emergency Operations Center to see the building as it exists today and how we managed and adapted under, I think, a lot of hard strain during our microstorm to adapt that building in crowded, very, very tight situations. It's obviously an older building. I'm having no idea how old that building is, but probably fifty years old, forty or fifty. It looks, looks good on the outside, but it, it needs a lot of erosion powder on the inside. And I wanted to just emphasize, uh, in one of the reports, we saw that perhaps a good subject to focus on in this, um, commission will be the upcoming Legislative Day in the Florida Association of Counties as we go and talk to the legislators. And, and I'd just like to emphasize a focus on our topping, talking points at some point as we prepare for that day. And I believe looking at the future planning for our emergency center and operations would be appropriate to consider. Where is that located? What will that look like? How will we do that?
Hey, Commissioner, I want to segue to that. Let me just go to item number five on my report. Informing the board that I did assist Michael Marone preparing the request of Senator Monther for our new county EOC. Mr. Pam Burnell wrote the narrative, but I did discuss with Pam an estimated cost. In order to increase the chances of legislative funding, it is always good to show a local match. So, in the legislative request, I suggest to Michael that we use the one million dollars the county has in consortium funds for the EOC as a local match, and then request three million dollars of legislative funds. I did discuss with Pam Burnell an estimated cost for EOC, and we agree that four million dollars should build a reasonable facility, so a twenty-five percent match in the county should help convince the legislators that we are serious about needing an EOC. And just as you said, the commissioners are going to the Legislative Day during the session. It would benefit us to personally lobby for the EOC funds, because I do not believe the one million dollars we have set aside in the consortium is enough to build a new building. I will tell you that when we had, when the previous, um, state EM director was down here, he had, I won't say promised or committed, but he had said that he would put into the state DEM budget money for Frank, for Franklin County EOC, but he's no longer with the state, so I do not know if that request is carried forward with the new management of the state EOC, state DEM. So, that's why we need to continue to lobby on our behalf. Just to give you some, some idea of where we're at with the four million dollars, though, that was a ballpark figure. There is no floor plan, there is no building layout, there has none of that been developed yet. That's something for you all to discuss, but I just wanted to capitalize on the, you know, I thought a twenty-five percent match was good, so that's sort of, we backed into that number, uh, you know, that's how we got there.
And our county is one of the very few that doesn't have a modern, up-to-date EOC now in Florida. Would that be correct?
Yes, yeah, I, I believe, and I made the statement in the legislative delegation stuff, and I confirmed with Pam. To my knowledge, we are the last coastal county in the state, in the Panhandle that does not have a new EOC. And so, I think that we have, we're in a good standing to get one, and we just need to let people know that we, everybody else has gotten one, but we need one also.
It just demonstrates what a good steward this Franklin County is, how we adapt to what we have. And I believe when the state does allocate money to us, that we have shown we have taken care of good money historically, and we can do it moving forward in the future.
Well, another thing is, that building was built out there, the code, the contained and everything, and it is not up to code. I mean, we own them.
It's way too crowded. It's not laid out to be an EOC. Uh, it was, it was a National Weather Service building. We think it was built probably in the mid-seventies, so you're now talking almost fifty years. Uh, and we've done the best we can to manage with a building that was not designed to be in the EOC.
It's not going to withstand that kind of wind what comes to me too much longer. Okay, next on the agenda will be Mr. Eric Loestring, Extension Officer Director.
Good morning, commissioners. You have my written report for the extension program, and I did not have any action items in there. And I just wanted to present you with another report to read in your leisure time. This is our 2018 Program Accomplishments Report for the Extension Program in the county. That's all I had for you today, unless you have some questions for me.
Anybody got anything for Mr. Eric? Keep up the good work.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Next on the agenda will be Mr. Ken Monting, Florida Association of County Trust. How you doing, Mr. Ken?
Good morning. Thanks. Nice meeting you this morning. As mentioned, I'm Ken Monting and with the Florida Association of Counties Trust. And with me also is Anna Doughty from the Florida Association of Counties, and John Pat Thomas from the Pat Thomas Insurance Agency, your current agent for insurance coverages. And maybe for the newly-elected commissioners, to give you a little bit of information on the FACT program. FACT is a pooled risk sharing program. It was formed in nineteen eighty-nine under Florida statutes that allow counties to pool their funds to pay claims. The coverage that FACT provides for the county is general liability, public officials' E and O, and employment practices. Franklin County has been a member of the program since nineteen eighty-nine, so it's been a long history of being a part of our FACT program. When FACT was formed in nineteen eighty-nine, the program set up an extraordinary loss fund called our surplus. It was to help make the program financially strong, and each county that became a member not only paid premiums, but in the first year paid into that loss fund. So, in effect, each county that's a member of the program has equity interest in the program. The program's also managed by an eleven-member board of trustees from the member counties. So, the county is managed and owned by the member counties, and it truly is a good program that has been started in, with the program. It's also an enterprise program for FAC, and we're also the largest corporate sponsor for the Small County Coalition. So, not only just supporting FACT through the insurance coverage, just supporting FAC and Small County Coalition were all the issues for small counties. The FACT board is constantly looking at our services and coverages that we're providing for our member counties to make sure that we have the best and strongest program out there. Thirty years ago, we never thought about the way technology would be growing in cyber liability insurance. That's something we've added. So, we're constantly looking at that, making sure that we have the broadest coverages available for our member counties. Also, from a service standpoint, we want to make sure that we're providing the best services and, and program, for the program for the, the counties. And the Florida Association of Counties has always been a part of the FACT program, but recently, the FACT board has made the association the administrator for the program. So, that's really helped us to get closer with our counties. The services and communication provided is much stronger. It's really worked out well. Also, the FACT board didn't feel that our services that we are providing were the best that they should be from a underwriting or claim standpoint. So, a couple of years ago, we changed our administrative services provider to the Florida League of Cities, and that has really helped us from that standpoint to make sure that our program is strong from our claims programs, from our coverage issues. And also, what it has done is help us to have a tighter relationship with the league in other coverages that are provided, the workers' comp, auto, and property. That's something now that we can team with them, and through John Pat and through their agency, which you currently have your coverages, we're able to team up with them a lot more to have a lot stronger program, both from, for the FAC and the league, to help provide a better service for our member counties. But part of what I wanted to do for today is, our program as mentioned started in nineteen eighty-nine, thirty years, and we're, uh, want to honor all of our member counties for being a part of our program for thirty years, and have a plaque that I'd like to present to the board for the appreciation of being a part and membership of the program for the past thirty years.
Come on up. We like plaques.
It just says, "Presented to Franklin County with our deepest appreciation for your membership and support." We really appreciate what you've been doing and being a part of the program for thirty years and hopefully another thirty years. But if I also could do, present this board and get a picture of the board with the plaque, if I can do that as well.
Come on up.
Now, Ken, as you're walking up, isn't it true that you've been with that FACT for thirty years also?
In May, it'll be thirty years.
Yeah, so maybe you should be getting a plaque too.
A lot more.
Come on up here and let's, yeah, come up, you all stand right here. Let's, Chairman, why don't you come on down here and.
We like plaques, we like money.
Good, nice to meet you. Get everyone in.
It's almost like a Super Bowl trophy, but not quite.
Get something back.
Just to thank you again for being a part of it and hopefully for another thirty years. And if there's anything we can do for you in the future, just let us know. We can help in any way.
Okay.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you for coming. Next on the agenda will be Mr. H. D. Carrington, Weems CEO.
Thank you, commissioners. Um, I've got a few things to go over. One of the things, I'm going to present the, um, financial report for the first quarter of the fiscal year, which ended December thirty-first, but before I get into that, we have a little bit of business to take care of. Uh, the hospital board approved a budget for fiscal year nineteen, which started on, um, October the first of last year. And then we had the storm, and things sort of got sidetracked. But the budget will be presented for your review and approval. The assumption, assumptions include a five percent increase in volume projected. In addition to that, we expect to have at least two swing bed patients per day. Last year, we had averaged about two point, or point two seven. It also incre, includes a four percent increase in our charges and a three percent cost increase for all of the expenses, and, and this means that we just expect the price of those to increase by three percent. The budget includes county subsidies of one point zero eight million for hospital operations, seven hundred and twenty-three thousand for EMS, and four hundred and ten thousand dollars for Weems East and West. And this is for planning purposes and what is what we'll work toward accomplishing with some of the improvements that we're trying to make, and I do need action on that, please.
Page to the board.
Can you just give us a little idea of the subsidies you're asking for for the forthcoming year? How do they compare to the last year's subsidies?
I think the, um, total is about two hundred thousand dollars more than what we received last year. And that is for the, according to the budget that's presented, and I can, um, if you'd like, I can break those down as to how much goes for the hospital itself, how much for the, um, medical offices in Carabelle and Appalachia Cola, and for the EMS. I can tell you just off the top of my head that EMS is doing quite well right now, and I think we're actually going to do better than budgeted. A lot of the increase was with the medical offices and trying to provide extended care, especially at Weems East. It's going to be very difficult for us to break even on that, but we are providing services to the community, and actually, we're, we're seeing, you know, a few Saturdays, we've had about seven or eight patients, which is good, and I've seen it increasing over the past, um, two or three weeks with, with more people moving into, or coming into the area.
Page to the board on that.
Motion for a second.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Mast. Any more discussion? All in favor? All opposed? That passes, unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, good morning, if I may. Mr. Kangton, would you explain, because there's confusion on the Weems Board of Directors, and I got questions in the public. They, they, they look at the budget that you're talking about in a similar fashion than the budget that we use at the county, which is like a fund account, a funding-style budget, where, you know, the board decides what we have in each department, that's all we're allowed to spend, but that's not necessarily the way you do the hospitals.
No, typically, typically hospitals, and for sure Weems Memorial, uses what they call accrual accounting, and it's more what, what you do at home or in your business. You know, before the beginning of the year, you, you put down what you think you're going to receive, and you put down what you think you're going to spend, and, and then each month, you look at it, and either you're under budget or over budget, and then you make adjustments as needed if you need to, if you can, and if you do that. With fund accounting generally, which is also called governmental accounting, is based on cash. And, uh, and the revenues, you know what you're going to get typically, and that's what comes in. And then your expenses are really called expenditures, and it's what you actually can spend. And if it's from a government fund, it's my understanding, although I've never actually worked in government, with government funding or fund account, fund accounting, uh, but you only spend what has been allocated for you to spend. Now, that's, this is something I learned when I was in college many, many, many years ago, but that's my understanding about it.
Thank you. Scott? I just wanted to affirm that with regard to cash flow and income and, you know, our accounts receivable, the discussions we've had, we are comforted in knowing that you're engaging in denial management. When these insurance claims come in that you billed for and that payments are coming in, there's somebody there that's analyzing the explanation of medical benefits to be certain that a payment that we did deserve wasn't dropped, and that we go and refile a resubmission claim. Is that true?
We are doing that, and that really, uh, that's called revenue cycle. And it really starts when a patient comes in the door to make sure that we, um, that we're getting copies of their insurance cards and that we verify that they do have insurance, and if there's a balance left over, uh, we try to collect some of that upfront. That's not always easy. That's not always easy. So, we want to make sure we're getting the correct information. And then, we have a coding company from the outside. And so, then, we try to get the bills out. We try to get them, get them out within five days after a patient's discharged or seen. And we file it to the insurance company. And you mentioned denial management. There's denial management. There's also other things where we just do insurance follow-up. And we do a lot of that at the hospital and also the company that provides our hospital information system. Also, they provide a lot of those, you know, follow-up type things. After that, once we get to the point that it becomes, that insurance is paid and it becomes a private pay account, then what we try to do is use our efforts, and we have an outside company that also does that. And what we try to do is make sure that we can collect as much as we can. But if someone does not have the ability to pay and they're indigent or somehow meet our charity care guidelines, we encourage them to fill out the paperwork and we make a determination. And the thing is, it's a lot better for us to write an account off. If we cannot collect it, it's much better for us to write it off to indigent care or charity care. Because that's something that we can claim on the, what they call the disproportionate share hospital survey, which is where we get our DISH funds and our LIP funds from. And so, if we're not going to collect on an account, we want to make sure that legally, we're writing it off to the right place and not just to general bad debts. And actually, the, there's a senior representative from Athena, which provides our system. That's at the hospital right now and will be here today and tomorrow morning, doing exactly what you're talking about, which means that he'll be looking at what we're doing, making sure that nothing's slipping through the cracks, that we think they're doing it, they think we're doing it. And like on insurance follow-up and making, or making phone calls. And then, when he leaves, I'm hoping to have some benchmarks that we can look at every week and every month to sort of keep us on track and see where we need to make adjustments.
So, these are the nice comments and the kinds of constructive, I think constructive comments that we have relative to our hospital. We heard the word subsidy today. And, but there's a foundation here relative to the subsidy. And we just heard it, how we're working those insurance claims and making sure that we can account for every penny that the hospital did or did not receive as we make decisions here on this board about subsidizing hospitals. So, now, we're talking about subsidy with factual-based foundation. That's important.
Thank you very much. The other, if there's no other questions on that, the other item with the budget, one thing we do at the hospital, we actually try to project expenses for three years, but then, we actually developed a, we develop a detailed budget for what we think we need for capital expenditures. Now, this can always change during the year if something goes out that we did not anticipate. But for this year, when we went through the capital budgeting process, we ended up with a total of $286,970. And this has historically, historically been paid out of the trust fund. And so, the hospital board approved this amount, but it was only for planning purposes. We don't go out and purchase any capital equipment items unless it's approved by the hospital board before the purchase as a recommendation to go to you guys so that you can approve the purchase through the trust fund. So, that's just a process we go through. And we also, for planning purposes, we try to schedule these out for each quarter. Now, in December, you went ahead and approved the purchase of an ultrasound system for $72,270. But we were able to go back to the vendor and got them to give it to us for $69,975. And so, that was a good thing. And then, also, you approved in December the purchase of a hematology analyzer for $42,275. And I called the vendor and said, now, we had only budgeted $40,000, which was true. And he said, okay, we can do that. So, we were able to save about $5,000. And we'll continue to do that as we go through our operations. So, that's it on the, on the budget, the operating budget and the capital budget. Okay? Just real quick, like on the, we mentioned the hurricane. I will tell you, I feel extremely good that we were able to open our medical offices in Carabel and in Appalachia Cola four days after the hurricane to provide services. We were also over to, able to move the emergency room to Weems West and have it open one week after the storm. The inpatient wing opened back up four weeks after the storm. And then, all services, including outpatient labs and x-rays and everything else, were available seven weeks after the storm. And so, I want to commend the staff at the hospital, the people that were doing the work for us from the insurance company. Everybody pitched in because there was not a lot of healthcare in this area. And I think the hospital folks did a great job of opening things back up and getting that done. I will tell you, with the ER being moved, back about a month ago, we had a surprise visit from the state, from ACHA, because we had a complaint from a patient that had come to the ER. And there were some supplies on the floor. There was a, some of the sharps containers, which is where we put the used needles and things like that. We had to put them in a, in a secure place. And also, there was one of the sinks that wasn't working as well as it should. So, the surveyor pops in unannounced, and that's always scary when a CEO finds out there are an ACHA surveyors here. So, when the surveyor found out that we were actually located at Weems West and not in our emergency room, she did her investigation, which took about three or four hours. And she came back and said, don't worry about this. You know, I'm completely dismissing this complaint. I actually think that your staff and the hospital leadership did a great job of providing emergency services and seeing patients this soon after the hurricane. The complaint was actually from services provided the day before Thanksgiving, which was just a little over a month after the hurricane. So, something that I thought was going to turn out bad. And sure, we should not have supplies on the floor. And sure, our sharps containers should be located at the proper level. And they are in our ER. But we were, at the time, we were in Weems West and we were scrambling to get everything done real quickly. So, okay? Financial highlights for the quarter ended December 31st. Revenues, and this is what we actually charged to patients, was 3.1 million. This is 647,000 dollars, less than what we budgeted, which is 22%. Net patient revenues, which is what we, what we expect to collect, because in the hospital business, you charge one thing, but you don't get paid that amount by Medicare, Medicaid, and your commercial insurance. And also, if there are any bad debts or charity care or anything like that in there too, the estimates for that are also taken out. So, our net patient revenues were 1.6 million, which was 32% under budget. Expenses were dead, were very close to budget at 2.0 million. County subsidies during that time were $535,000. To leave us with a $362,000 loss for the first quarter of the fiscal year. Now, these variances were really due to the fact of having reduced services throughout the end of October after the storm and even into the first half of November. Cash at December 31st, and this was something that we've really been tracking because with reduced revenues, we know we're not going to collect the money. Reduced cash was $371,000, which is actually 17.8 days' worth of expenses that we had on hand at the end of December. And that was $407,000 less than what we had in, at 9/30/18, which was the beginning of the fiscal year. You know, when we think that we're, that cash went down $470,000, that sounds pretty bad. But actually, it's not too bad when you consider that we had no swing bed patients during that time. Services were very much reduced during that time. And yet, we continue to pay our employees and also pay our vendors for providing supplies, drugs, and services. And hopefully, we're seeing that turnaround now. Okay? Now, to go through some other, other items that have happened over the past few months, we have a new EMS director, Richard Louis Lewis. He's going to actually be working on the quick response vehicle full-time. There was a recommendation from a consultant that we had hired to look at our operations. And he felt like we could really make improvements if we had a full-time director. And this is the first time we've done this in about a year. And I think it's going to really turn out well. Louis has eight years of experience as a paramedic and has actually worked at Weems for seven years. And he lived at Alligator Point at one time, then moved up, I think, to Crawfordville and is planning to move back to Alligator Point. I will tell you that Kenny Gilbert, who sort of handled things during the interim, did a great job of getting the EMS services where it is now. And didn't want to continue as the director because he wants to be a nurse. And hopefully, will be starting nursing school in Mayor's Unit this year. And actually, Louis is here, if I can bring him up. He's going to be very visible in the community. And this is something else that the consultant told us that we needed to do. And so, he's going to be out going to the schools, attending all of the events like the seafood festival and things like that. Louis?
Good morning. I'm really grateful for the opportunity.
Give me your name.
Mr. Carrington and the county.
Give me your name for the rook.
Richard Lewis. And I look forward to having EMS become a more integrated part of the community. It's something we've been lacking for a long time. It's one of my primary goals. And I look forward, and I really appreciate all your support.
And you're living in Alligator Point now?
Uh, no, I'm looking for places right now. I'm currently in Crawfordville and a commute at the moment.
Okay.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
And I mentioned the operational review. Dr. Patrick Conrad, who is our, we have to have a medical director that's over the EMS. And that's Dr. Conrad, does a great job. But he and I had talked in the fall, and he wanted to have a, an operational, operational review done. So, we hired somebody that used to be a state reviewer, Pip Pippin, R.C. Pippin. He conducted a review on November the 29th and then presented a final report on the 22nd. Included several recommendations. I will tell you that routine reviews of the run reports and truck maintenance and the drug supply inventory had already been corrected by the time he got back and make, made his final report. Currently, we're looking at updating our clinical protocols, which comes from the medical director. And it sort of prescribes what the EMTs and the paramedics do in the field under their license. We're also looking at the departmental policies and procedures. So, I think we'll see things continue to get better and better in that area. The Weems Medical Offices, we continue to try to make improvements there. We're doing the same thing with them, with the revenue cycle that we were doing at the hospital. We're also trying to improve patient satisfaction and also looking for ways to serve more patients. Going to extended hours on Saturdays was a good thing. If it gets real busy, we'll consider other extended hours and looking at ways that we can help make our medical offices a medical home for the patients here. Fiscal year audit, Carl Riggs and Ingram, who the boards, I mean, the county commissioner selected this past year, came and they finished their field work. And they have done a really good job, have really dug into things. And when they finish the final audit, they will present it to the hospital board. This firm will also be completing our cost report, which has to be filed by February the 27th. And this is to determine how much we will get paid by Medicare and Medicaid. This company, not only do they do real well with the audit, but they do have extensive experience with rural hospital reimbursement. In my opinion, they're probably at least one of the top two in the southeastern United States. And the fact that they're located, their home office is in Enterprise, Alabama, it makes them close enough that they can come and provide lots of, not just audit work, but other consultative services for us as a part of that. So, I think this is going to be a good thing. Ultrasound services, you did approve that. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Amanda Wilson, that you, most of you know, is now Amanda Byrd. But she has been hired as our ultrasonographer. She's going to start off part-time and will be moving to full-time just as quickly as possible. But she did do the first, the first ultrasound on one of our patients last Friday. And as of this Thursday, she will be doing ultrasound procedures on outpatient and also on ER patients. She has eight years of experience as an ultrasound sonographer. And one of the good things, you guys did approve, like I said, about $72,000 for this. But the Weems Memorial Hospital Foundation has agreed to assist the county with the purchase of this. And I think John is here. John, if you can come up. And, you know, they, they have been very active in working with the, with the hospital. And this is something that, why don't you tell them what you tried to do?
John Solomon, President of Weems Memorial Hospital Foundation. During the inception of the foundation, our main goal was to get a mobile ultrasound machine at Weems Memorial Hospital to be used at the clinics and at the hospital. And, you know, we've been waiting for a long time for this to happen. So, we've been going over the funds that we have in our, currently have in our account. And as much as possible that we can give from the foundation to Weems Hospital to offset some of the costs for the ultrasound, we're going to do and still stay viable to raise more money to add back to that account for this ultrasound machine. Because like I stated, that was the original goal when the foundation was formed. That was our first thing on our list. And we just have to commend Mr. H. D. and the board and the staff of the hospital and the county commission for actually that goal becoming a reality. Because for so long, it felt like that that wasn't going to happen.
Okay. Becky Gibson, who has been the Director of Nursing, wow, did such a great job for so many years, had an unfortunate accident last February and is still not, still not back where she needs to be from a physical standpoint. We had talked after the first of the year, and Becky actually resigned as the Director of Nursing and also all of her other clinical and administrative duties effective February the 15th, 2019. Like I said, she'd been, she's been on medical leave since February of last year. And she's been trying to still assist us with some of the risk management functions and infection control and some of those administrative duties. But she's not going to be able to return, and that's very unfortunate. We are currently seeking candidates and will hopefully have somebody in place fairly soon. One of the things that we're going to do is look at a reorganization of the nursing department. Becky, like a lot of other very experienced DONs, have everything under their, not only is it under their responsibility, but they do so much of the work. And I've seen this in a lot of other small hospitals. And what we'll be doing is trying to spread out those duties, which I think will help us hire the right person. I think it will also help us, help some of our other staff nurses to sort of increase their skills. And I think it's going to make everything better from a clinical standpoint at the hospital. Ever since Becky left, Courtney offered. standpoint at the hospital. Ever since Becky left, Courtney Alford, who is also a local person, who's been an RN for 11 years, has been doing a great job as the lead RN and hopefully will have a full-time DON within the next couple of weeks. Also, it just so happens that Becky's husband, Craig, who has been taking care of her, and he was our plant ops director. And he went on medical leave for three months after having surgery in December. And then he, then he resigned after, came back as the plant ops director effective 2/15/19. I hired, when he went into a, when he was on medical leave, with the idea that we've got to present something to, to the county commissioners for the new building plans and all of that. In March, I really needed somebody that was strong in project management and construction, that knows all about this. And I feel fortunate to have found Nicole Sheppi. And I hired her as an interim director to work primarily on the, on the renovation project, but also provide management for maintenance, housekeeping, laundry and dietary and to perform other plant ops duties. She has extensive experience as a project manager for large construction projects and general management leadership skills. Plus, she has a, a clinical background. She was already here working for us as a, as a part-time EMT and she was, just completed her associate degree in nursing. And so, I think it's good to have, have project management, construction skills, clinical skills and have the management experience that she has. We will be seeking candidates for the, for the permanent position as we look for, to make some leadership, change the leadership structure of the hospital. She is looking at all the former plans, looking at the architects that we already have. We don't want to go back and, and reinvent the wheel. We have a good design right now. We want to continue with that and make small tweaks. She's also in touch with the construction folks up at TMH to see how they can assist us with this and give us some suggestions. The third large change at the hospital is Jenny, Jenny Myrick, who had stepped in as the CFO when the former CFO resigned, when he came into play. And when, when she came in, she's been working with the financial management of the hospital, but she asked to step back into her former role so that she could spend more time with her family and complete her education because she's working on a master's degree. And also, so that she could learn more about the finance, financial management of hospitals. We were able to hire an experienced CFO with 15 years of experience in small rural hospitals. And the good thing is that he loves the coast and actually has moved to East Point. So, these three, you know, hopefully, we'll be able to hire a local DON, which will really help us. We have Nicole currently that lives on St. George Island and hopefully is not going anywhere. And now, we have a CFO that lives on East Point that hopefully will not go anywhere. And all of these people, I think, are, at least the two are extremely qualified.
Well, one more change for the board that we're, we're expecting, I think, pretty much arrested items on HD's list. You guys can call him if you have any questions on it. Well, the major one is the new chairman of the board. On Thursday, the Weems Board of Directors voted and elected a new chairman of the board. Doug, would you please stand up and come to the podium, introduce yourself for those who don't know you, which I can't believe that anybody in here don't know you, except for the visitors.
I think most everyone knows me or-
Let me get your name.
Doug, Douglas Kramer. I look forward to working closely with Mr. Cannington and with the county commission. I would encourage each of you, if you have a question or concern about, you know, the hospital, contact me or Mr. Cannington or one of your board members that you've selected to represent you and let us, you know, get that answer for you. Because communication's key to the success of the hospital. And we're a reflection of you. So, let me encourage you to do that. And I look forward to working with the commission and with Mr. Cannington and the administration of the hospital.
Yeah, welcome aboard.
Hi, Commissioner. I think that's pretty much-
No, no motion or any-
No.
Okay.
Are there motions for, the board need to ratify?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure if that's in the bylaws or not. I know they had appointed, I, I think it's okay now.
Okay.
Michael, do you?
He's talking to you, Michael.
I understand that. Have you and HD looked over the amendments I made in the bylaws? Y'all okay with the changes that were made?
Yes.
Yes. No.
Oh, yeah.
Maybe so.
Kinda.
Let's do step number one, have the board ratify the amendment to the current bylaws. Because the current bylaws provide for Mr. Morone, the county coordinator to be the chairman. I've, I've changed the bylaws, gave them to Mike about a day or so ago. So, first motion would be to adopt the bylaws as amended, authorize the chairman to sign it. And then the second motion, or you could do them, you could combine them together, I guess, but then ratify Doug Kramer as the new hospital board chairman. The bylaws would provide-
HD.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Y'all also need to appoint a vice chairman. The bylaws, the way they used to be written is there was a chairman and a vice chairman before Mr. Morone-
And a secondary-
And we did, and actually, at the board meeting, they did, I think they did make a recommendation on changing the bylaws.
Yes, that's correct.
And they, you know, they did because that's the way it works and then this board has to ratify it. And then also, I think we did elect-
Mr. Clark is the, Mr. Michael Clark is the vice chair and-
Kristen Anderson is the secretary.
So, we did elect all three officers.
Yep.
So, first motion would be to ratify the amendment to the bylaws, removing the county coordinator as the chairman. And the amendment would then have the hospital board select their new chairman and vice chairman annually. And then you would ratify that appointment of the chairman and the vice chairman. Motion number one, ratify the bylaws as amended. Motion number two is to ratify the new chairman and vice chairman of the hospital board.
Can they be included together or do they need to be separate?
I think they can be combined. I think as long as the, the records will be clear what the board is doing, the motions can be combined, I think.
Raise your vote.
Motion to approve what the attorney has recommended. Second.
Motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Masters. Any more discussion on that? All in favor? All opposed? A pass unanimous?
We're good.
Good.
I, I think they'll call if they have any more questions on the, your other items.
Okay.
Is there any you have to make any more action through?
I'll, can I go quickly?
Okay.
All right. Cola survey, our lab was surveyed and we got a very good report. We are going to be engaging in a flex assessment that's paid for by the federal government for quality and assurance. We're going to be doing faith-based initiatives. We're going to be beautifying the hospital with the grounds, the signage and the front lobby. And we did approve our first EMS scholarship, which is great. And that person will be starting hopefully pretty soon. Thank you very, very much.
Commissioner, if, if you don't mind, can we amend the agenda to make a switch between-
John Solomon, FCMC. They're here, they have some people waiting to hear the presentation. So, if we can do FCMC first and then Mr. Solomon. I asked Mr. Solomon if he could wait a little longer. He said he could.